City of Cannon Falls, City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August the first to order. Roll call.
Councilmember Abidi.
Present.
Althoff.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
McCusker.
Yeah.
And Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Seems like it's been forever since we had a meeting, which almost has. But this time, the Chair will take a motion of the amended agenda. Some move?
I'll second it.
Who's the person? Motion by Ken, second by Morris. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. That moves us on to public input this evening. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm just here in hopes that the council would make a decision on the roadway west of the winery. Because we never have. So far, the mayor's shut it off. I think that the winery decides when they're gonna close it and for how long. And I think there's plenty of room there for them to operate and for the public to pass, since it is a public roadway. And since the city owns it. At least I think it is. Nobody seems to know. I've talked to Maroni. How can this be that tough? Been a roadway for a hundred years that I'm aware of. Did you find anything out, Ken?
Well, I talked to a couple land surveyors that know a lot more than I do, and they are pretty ninety-nine percent sure it does not meet the legal requirements for a road.
It doesn't meet the legal requirements?
No.
It's a roadway by prescriptive easement.
It's a parking lot with two, a north and south entrance.
Well, isn't this interesting? I don't think it gets any simpler than what this is. And I've dealt with MINDAT on this very issue just north of town, on the road that came to Cannon Falls way back in the pioneer days. It's on private property. They still can't keep me from accessing it, and they know that. They tried, but they know they can't. No Maroni. He said I was probably right. Nobody cares to do anything about it.
It's not on the agenda.
Well, I'm hoping we have a discussion tonight about this.
Good.
We're talking about the parking down there on Mill Street, and hopefully, um, we talk about it more. I think it needs to be talked about myself with all the calls I get, but, um, I guess it's up to the rest of the council.
Well, good. I hope somebody makes a decision. Be nice.
Anybody else wishing to address the council under public input? If not, that'll move us on to item six this evening. The first one is item A, Public Hearings to Consider Adoption of Part Two Wellhead Protection Plan Update. Tom?
I'm gonna give you the deer in the headlights look because Minnesota River Water was gonna be here. The Wellhead Protection Plan is a nice, big, thick document about GABIG that took several years to get part two. What it is, it's a protection area that's set up by the state, the most vulnerable areas of our water supply system. That including private wells, points of input, highways, things like that. The DWISMA, which is a big fancy word for that area, they've shrank that down, which is good for us. We have a smaller area of contamination. All we're doing with this document is just saying we continue to monitor that, we continue to keep due diligence on anything that comes into that area, anything that's spilt in that area, anything that could affect the future potability of the water of Cannon Falls. So by adopting that, we're just moving this to Phase Two, which has been twenty-five years in the making from Phase One to where we're at now. Greg can maybe comment more on that, but...
Yeah, this is part of the Department of Health's effort, and the city will have to update it again in about ten years. It does have a list of tasks the city will have to undertake over the next ten years. It's kind of in the form of an unfunded mandate, if you will. Hey, we need you to protect your water, and here we're gonna tell you how to do it. And it's gonna cost you some money to do it and some staff time to do it. And that's all in here, too, what steps they recommend, a calendar on when that should be done, what years. But like Tom said, the biggest part of this was the modeling that took place to identify the groundwater, how it moves and gets to the city's well field, and where it comes from, and how long it takes to get there, and that's what defines the DWISMA, which is the drinking, is a fancy acronym for Drinking Water Supply Management Area. That's in here. It's got a figure. It shows where it's at, and within that area, they've listed all the wells that are known, potential contamination so, points. And part of the effort would be, okay, as those properties come up, or discussions with the property owners, hey, if you're not using the well, can we get it capped? Start limiting the potential access points for contamination into the, into the well. At the end of the day, they just wanna protect the water as much as the city does. So this is a step that's required. You need to have the public hearing tonight. And any comment will be recorded and put into the final Part Two document that ends up getting adopted by the council, and then the city has it. Department of Health has a copy, and then that's the roadmap kinda to protect your wellhead moving forward. So I would still urge you to just open the hearing, take comment, and close it, and then any comments we get, we'll note them and then put them in the final draft.
Okay. All right, at this time, we will open the public hearing for the Part Two Wellhead Protection Plan Update. Is there anyone wishing to address the council for the Part Two Wellhead Protection Plan Update? Is there anyone wishing to address the council for the Part Two Wellhead Protection Plan Update? Is there anyone wishing to address the council on the Part Two Wellhead Protection Plan Update? Seeing as there is no one wishing to address the council, at this time, we will close the public hearing. And the Chair will take a motion to approve the Part Two Wellhead Protection Plan Update.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Mike, second by Ken. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I got some things I'd like to add to that. It's really interesting to me what, if this is every twenty years or whatever, that Governor Dayton is doing this right now. Because, uh, in my fifty years of working with wells and septic and water mains and water systems, I've seen a lot of changes, and it really concerns me. And the one thing that really concerns me is that our wells are changing. Uh, the one thing that happened the first twenty years I was in business, we worked with shallow wells, and we worked with wells around a hundred and fifty feet. And the longer I was in business, they went deeper. We went to the Jordan vein, and then we went to the other veins. And then studies were done, and they decided that they should drill them deeper and run the pump shallower. And I don't wanna get too deep into this outside of that. When I seen that there's gonna be meetings on this, I got so excited because I wanna go to the meetings. Because I have talked to the county and the state both about that we need to change things with our well systems. Now, the one thing I would like to point out to Tom that I've seen in my lifetime happen is that when I pull a well nowadays, every once in a while, I get a five-gallon pail of box elder bugs out of the well. Um, Asian beetles are another thing that we never had when I first started out, the first twenty-five years. It's very important for any wells we got, Tom, inside the city, that they be, the caps be sealed off. And I don't care if you don't wanna buy the expensive cap that seals it off. All you have to do is get a tube of silicone out there and seal them. Because we are having sulfur problems, and we are getting hydrogen problems, we are getting wells that are black inside. And for some reason, things are really changing. And I think this is a great subject to not demonize the fact that farmers are within five feet of the creek, and we want them to be fifty feet. Uh, this is about our total safety of our water system, and one thing with Minnesota, that's one of our big assets. So I just wanted to point out that I think this is a very serious subject and needs to be taken seriously. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved. That moves us on to item B, which is Resolution 2290, certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. Lanell?
Thank you, Mayor. It is the quarterly public hearing that we held, or that we will be holding for the unpaid utility bills. Um, I honestly haven't had a chance to look at them to compare them two before, so I don't know how they compare to prior lists. Uh, one thing I will note is we are still in the process of, and we're getting very close to being able to allow the credit cards. So we're hoping that that will have an impact on this. Um, so, but for tonight's meeting, you have the list before you, and then we'll take public input on that.
I thought we were, I thought that was already in place, the credit card payment.
No, it hasn't. It was, it was approved by the City Council to start that process, and so we had to get the equipment and the things that were provided by the company. And the programs are now ready, and we're about this close to getting it going now.
All right. Any other discussion before we open the public hearing? I'm just looking at it. It looks about the same, or maybe a little less than what the last quarter was. I think the last one was right around twenty-one. So I mean, it's a little less. I don't see anything really standing out as far as the numbers go. I mean, from what I've seen, I mean, uh...
Actually, it was up a couple thousand, wasn't it?
Last time, last time it was.
Eight thousand last time?
I think it was twenty-one.
Oh, okay.
Somewhere in there.
It seems like the list is a little longer.
Well, I was kinda excited because I was hoping the credit card thing had kicked in already, and we could see if there was a difference.
Is that what the computer is out in the lobby out there?
Okay.
Good.
I noticed many of those bills are not for a whole lot of money. Some as little as a monthly payment.
Yep. All right. There's no other discussion. At this time, we'll open the public hearing for Resolution 2290, uh, for the unpaid utility charges for the second quarter of two thousand and seventeen. Is there anybody wishing to address the council for Resolution Certifying Unpaid Utility Charges to Be Collected With Taxes? Is there anyone wishing to address the council under Resolution 2290, certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes? Is there anyone wishing to address the council under Resolution 2290, Resolution Certifying Unpaid Utility Charges to Be Collected With Taxes? If not, the, at this time, we will close the public hearing, and Chair will take a motion to approve Resolution 2290.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Cedar, second by John. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That moves us on to item seven this evening, the consent agenda. Items of this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. Item seven A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending July the twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen. Item B are the meeting minutes for the July eighteenth, two thousand and seventeen city council meeting. Item C, temp, approved temporary own cell liquor license for the Cannon Falls Lions Club. And item D, set budget workshop meeting. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
A.
A?
Yeah.
Okay, item A will become item eight E. Are there any others? If not, Chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item A, which will become item eight E under council business.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Moves us on to council business. Item A is group employee health insurance.
Thank you. Uh, tonight, we have Bill Singer with the AT Group present. As I stated in my memo, and I think I mentioned at the last meeting, in previous years, we haven't known what our health insurance premiums are gonna be until November, right about the time of setting our final levy. We moved our renewal date up a month, so that gave us the opportunity to, to learn what our rates will be much sooner, actually, this time of the year. As I said, Bill works for the AT Group. They've worked on behalf of the city, working with the city's insurance over the past approximately ten years. I worked with Bill, or Bill worked with the city of Lake City when I was there, uh, for several years before that. Anyway, um, Bill's here. He can kind of explain maybe the, well, I don't know, about the health environment, health insurance environment. But as best as you can, at least where we're sitting is a municipality and, and here in Cannon Falls.
Yep. All right, again, my name, my name is Bill Singer, and I've been working with the, um, the city for ten years. I'm one of those individuals that gets to work with the Affordable Care Act on a daily basis. So, uh, that's some of the, some of my struggles in my industry right now. I work with the, the city on the health, the life insurance, the dental insurance, the long-term disability, the voluntary vision care, the flexible benefit plan, which is also sometimes called the cafeteria plan, and then also on the COBRA administration to help the city stay not only up to speed with what's going on with the benefit world, but also help them to stay compliant. Because, uh, in my industry right now, it's been more about compliance than it has been about benefits lately, uh, since the inception of the Affordable Care Act. So a little bit about our health renewal. This year, uh, we're with Health Partners for our health insurance. Uh, the good news is that Health Partners is considered the best carrier in the state. Also, we are in Also, we are in a very large pool that helps us. However, the difficult part of our situation, and I talked to Robbie about this just for about two minutes before the meeting, is that we're in Region One in the state. Region One is populated mainly by the male clinic. And that has caused us to have higher, how do you say that nicely? Our rates are higher than everybody else's, okay? Due to the fact that, that we're in the presence of the male, we get to deal with the, the charges that they, that they have. Nonetheless, so our Health Partners Insurance Renewal for twelve-one of this year came in at nine percent. That was higher than I had hoped. That is also higher than I'd seen in other areas of the state. So without necessarily just rolling over and taking nine percent, we just don't want to do that. We thought we would take a look at every other option that is out there. So I thought I would do for you is just give you, what, ten, fifteen seconds on all the other options we looked at. And then unlike the years in the past where the health insurance decision has always been fairly easy because we've had a good carrier with the best rates, historically, Health Partners has had better rates than pretty much the rest of the, the carriers. Historically, they've also had an administration and claim system that is run extremely well. They were rated top twenty in the nation for a couple of years. And so we're with a good plan, but nonetheless, here we go. So in the state of Minnesota, for small groups, which we're a small group, we're in a large pool, but we're a small group and small groups, according to the Affordable Care Act, is anybody under fifty, okay? Fifty full-time equivalent employees. So we have to look at carriers that offer small group insurance. So the first carrier, we only have four in the state, okay? Blue Cross, Preferred One, Medica, and Health Partners. And then along that, with that, we have a couple self-insure or co-op slash self-insure items that are out there. So if we take a look at the four carriers that are out there, we're already with Health Partners. So they gave us nine percent. Good carrier, but more than we wanted to take. We look at Preferred One, Preferred One has ceased even offering any coverage in Area One. Okay, so they're not even an option. They don't even sell here anymore, okay? We end up with the next carrier we looked at, well, I'll go down the list here in, in order. I looked at the service, well, the Service Co-op, okay? The Service Co-op was the next carrier I looked at. This is a carrier that is, it's a self-insured pool, but the groups in it are fully insured. Our claims and our rates for our group, if we were in the Service Co-op, would be partially determined by our group's utilization. Does anyone know what utilization is? How much we use compared to how much we send in? So I took a look at our utilization and our utilization says that we would probably be looking at a fifty percent increase in order for our claims and our utilization to match. Or for us to even be at all attracted, attractive to a Service Co-op. Because they don't want to invite a group into their co-op that's going to use four hundred thousand dollars worth of claims and only send in three hundred thousand dollars worth of premiums. That doesn't help the co-op as a whole, okay? So for our situation, not being in the co-op is protecting us from higher rates. Right now, we are in a large community-rated pool with Health Partners where all of the groups that have the same plan that we have, have the same rates all across Region One. So that's a fairly large pool. Having community rates has protected us for the last few years, okay? So that, there's another option that doesn't work for us. We took a look at PEAP, the Public Employees Insurance Plan. Okay, if you, it's a, it's a plan that just uses other carriers' networks. PEAP is a, we, we sent out, we got proposals from PEAP. The good news is, is that the rates came in lower. The hard part is, is that it's due to a significant reduction in benefits from the PEAP plan. PEAP has a plan that works based on network tiers. The more expensive your network, the higher the cost to the employee. Our network, the Cannon Falls, has the highest expense rating within PEAP. So for example, if you were, our current plan has a thirty dollar copay. That's equivalent to a Tier One PEAP plan. Cannon Falls networks are Tier Four. Everybody's office copay would go to a hundred and twenty dollars for an office visit copay, okay? That is how they would be able to save some dollars. Let me just make sure that's right. Yes, a hundred and twenty dollar copay. So that didn't become an option to us just because it would be such a drastic reduction in benefits to the employees that I would fear you would have a revolt on your hands going to, from a thirty dollar copay to a hundred and twenty dollar copay. Deductibles would do the same thing, though, from where we are to, to two or three times higher than where we are. So there's another option that didn't work for us. I looked at Medica. Medica has a plan that's similar to ours. However, due to the Affordable Care Act, which requires that small group health insurance carriers continue to change their plan design so that the employees continue to pay more every year, it's right in the Affordable Care Act, that they have to change their plan design so that the employees pay more consistently. Medica just made a change in their co-insurance, which means that it's more money out of the employee's pocket. So in the situation with Medica, we ended up with less premium. However, it wasn't really less premium, it was less, it was a cost shift. The cost shift would go from the city's premium to the employee's pocketbook. Because even though the premium was less, the employee's share was more. Does that make sense? So we're just cost shifting in that situation. So that, there was no, there's no compelling reason to cost shift. If we wanted to cost shift, we could cost shift with the same carrier that we're at. It would be a lot smoother transition. But that's just, it's just not employee-friendly to cost shift. So now we're only down to one carrier left, which was Blue Cross. Blue Cross came in with a premium that was lower, which historically hasn't been the case. Makes people like me nervous when all of a sudden a carrier takes it, has a carrier, a rate increase or a rate change that was different than the market. Some of the things that I look at when I consider insurance carriers is their history. And historically, small group plans with Blue Cross have been more expensive. Blue Cross's plans went down a little bit. Actually, I didn't say that, shouldn't say they went down. They probably didn't go up as much as the other carriers did a year and a half or two ago. However, since then, they've been rapidly catching the nor, the rates from Health Partners and Medica. By that, I mean, is if we were with Blue Cross last year and now we were with Blue Cross again this year, we would have had a sixteen percent increase because their rates are going up faster than anybody else's. And I, and I fear that a move to them would be short-lived and we would be doing this again next year, flipping back to Health Partners. So all of that said, I want to make myself available for questions. But first, give you my recommendation here is that I can't see a compelling reason to move at this point from a carrier that has the administration and claims processing down and has historically been very good, even in light of the fact that there are some things in our area and region that are kind of fighting against us. So with that said, I'll answer questions.
Just one question, Bill. I know that you went and looked to see what, if, if we were in Dakota County, if the city hall was in, on the Dakota County side of this, how much less would our rates be in Region Eight compared to us in Region One?
Yes. Okay, at Ron's request, I ran a, ran a, a comparison for the same exact plan. And it works out like this, that if, let's just use it for easy math. If the rates were a thousand dollars for somebody in Dakota County, your exact plan would be fifteen hundred. It's a fifty percent increase just because you're in Region One compared to Region Eight. Now, Region Eight is pretty much the least expensive region. So it's, you're, you're the least expensive to the most expensive, so there is a significant difference. The other regions in the state are scattered in between there. I'm guessing the, I believe the southwest is the other region, which is slightly influenced by the male down here. But then if you go north, way north, you end up with a little higher than Region Eight, which is the metro because there's no competition. In the metro, you have lots of competition, so the rates are better. So that's a long answer, but yeah, the Region Eight is, is higher.
I mean, and we've been fighting this, I mean, for quite a few years, ever since the Affordable Care Act came out, I mean, and.
And before then even, Region Eight was higher.
Right.
So.
And what do you think is the biggest cause of that?
Oh, it's the male. I, I'm convinced it's the male clinic. And, and until you have the male clinic charge rates similar to what everybody else charges, I think you're going to be in the same ball. It's, you know? And I understand, it's a horrible thing. However, you talk to people in Region Eight and Region Five and they're, they're not wanting, you know, they have plans there that exclude the male from their network just to reduce their costs, so.
Yeah, but a lot of the folks in Region, Region Eight come down and use Mayo right in our system and they get the less rates compared to what we have.
Yes, true. They can use your, they can use the male. They have to pay for slightly high, there's, there's slightly higher rates for plans that have access to the male, if you are correct.
It depends on the company.
But it's not fifty percent.
I might, I know, but I mean, it depends on the company, which company charges. Some of them, that's right in their network. I mean, it's males in some, in a lot of these places in the city's network, so I mean, they can travel from up there. But if we go up there, we're still paying the same price as if we were going, you know, so.
Yep, you are correct. You are correct. Absolutely. You are, it's, it's just the proximity that everyone is so close to the male here, that that's their first choice, where it's not always the first choice of someone. For serious things, a lot of people will want to head to the male. But for the daily, hey, I got a finger that's dislocated because I play basketball, they will just go to their local clinic, so, but yeah.
I got a lot of questions for you.
I'm here. I got bulletproof vest on. I'm an insurance agent. Do this a lot.
You got it on. You know, this stuff, sometimes in America, just gets bizarre. It's, it's not about the good things or the right things. It's always about the dang money. I get so sick of that. And I, of course, I've been a part of Goodyear County, always being higher on the insurance end all these years, trying to figure out why that is. I got to tell you that I don't like you bringing up the Mayo Clinic like that. Not because I don't think you're right. I just, I just think it's more to it than that because people could, you guys could specify that they don't go to the Mayo and go someplace else. So I don't want to get into some kind of a contest here with Mayo Clinic demonizing them. So I'd rather not talk about that anymore. But what I would like to talk about is how many employees we have in Cannon Falls and how much we're spending for insurance on each employee. If you talk about, if you could fill me in on that and if you could fill me in on thirty dollar deductible versus a hundred and twenty dollar deductible, but we're passing a nine percent expense on to all the citizens of Cannon Falls to pay for this, maybe the hundred and twenty isn't so bad. So I, I'm sitting here really happy that you're here to answer these questions because I think this needs to have a serious talk. And I think the blame game, I'm pretty much tired of it. So if you could, how many employees do we have, Ron, that are on insurance right now? I mean, you say it's fifty or less, right?
It's, it's fifty or less, yep.
Right, and we're less than fifty, I assume?
Yeah, that, that fifty is the full-time eligible employees. That doesn't mean that we have that many that are on the city's insurance. That that is full-time and full-time equivalent employees, so.
Well, if we, if we break that down to we got forty employees, is, what does it come out to be, five thousand a year?
It's probably closer to ten thousand a year.
Ten thousand a year?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
So the other thing is, is there anything that says that we have more claims or anything than any other town our size? Is that, when you talked about claims and stuff? Yeah, you're in the insurance business to handle claims. I, we can't run around and tell people, you know, we don't want you using a jackhammer because you might get hurt. We want insurance. When the people need a jackhammer, we ought to know they're covered. And if we have a claim, to me, there's some kind of balance. I don't. So is Cannon Falls rated higher for risk?
The pool that we're in rates everybody exactly the same. So we don't absorb any other risk or any excessive risk due to our claims utilization. Part of the Affordable Care Act established what's called community rates for groups our size, which means Cannon Falls and Pine Island and City of Cassin and whatever other group, if they all had the same plan that we had, they would all have exactly the same rates because we have what's known as community rates. So we're in a very large community-rated pool, which actually helps us. Because your second point was, do we use more than the average group? Yes, we do. So if we were to move outside of that community rating, on, for example, if we wanted to try to self-insure ourselves, we, our rates would have to go up, so we would have to pay more to cover our own claims. But since we're actually community-rated, it's good to be in the protection of the community. So hopefully that.
If I, if I just openly think about this right now, if we're roughly talking ten thousand a person. I watch the news a lot and read a lot and everybody wants to demonize Obamacare. I understand that. But you turn around and when you watch them interview people, when it started out, they were paying like three seventy-five and then it was five twenty and, and then it's up to six and then it's up to seven. So I'm sitting here thinking if the Affordable Care Act is, is out there and people have options on that and you're going to pay seven hundred dollars a month to have insurance on there and it's costing us a thousand a month or whatever, why, why do we keep doing this? Because you guys are notorious of never going down. You're like the gas station. Whenever I go in to fill up, it's always up.
Right.
And I, I, I pay my insurance bills out and I've been doing it for fifty years now. And there's an increase every year. And it's always somebody's fault or something else. So I, I still can't believe that the medical system hollers about being more efficient and better and everything else and yet insurance keeps going up. So to me, this whole thing just drives me nuts because to me, we'd almost be better off to give all of our employees an eight thousand dollar raise and say, figure out your own insurance. Because if we do it this year, next year, you're going to come back, tell us another nine percent. And it's that way every year. So I don't have the answers for this. And I, you got a very tough job and I appreciate you doing this. But to me, whether they pay a hundred and twenty dollar deductible or thirty and we could get the cost out or at least keep it neutral, I don't know if that's a bad thing. So I think as long as you got the insurance companies making money off the working-class citizen, this isn't going to change.
Okay, so let me just jump in on a couple of those things here, if you don't mind. I know this is pretty exciting Affordable Care Act stuff. In the state of Minnesota, there are four insurance companies because the other insurance companies have left due to the fact that the state has a rule that says all insurance companies have to be nonprofit. So by law, they are considered nonprofit. So by law, they are considered nonprofit. United Healthcare, which is the one everybody hears about on the news, doesn't sell in Minnesota because it's not a non-for-profit. Now, the state regulates how much they can and cannot make. And so in our situation, the insurance companies, when I look at the revenues versus claims and things, they're one percent, one and a half percent is about the margin that they run under. So in this equation, in the state of Minnesota, the insurance companies, as far as, uh, profit-taking, that's not part of the equation, okay? The state regulates, uh, how many, um, how much they can charge for premiums based on the claims, history, and trend. And trend is how much more all of these things are gonna cost next year compared to how much they cost this year. Because not everything goes up every year, but some things go up every year. So I understand the frustration there. Especially in some states where there may be more profit-taking, it's not necessarily the case in Minnesota. Hopefully that, trying not to demonize anybody here, um, uh, for our situation where we have employer-sponsored insurance. Okay, part of what the Affordable Care Act did was say, as an employer, you cannot give your employees money to have them go buy insurance on the open market. So they eliminated that option. Some groups had done that just because of what had happened to insurance rates. But the Affordable Care Act, uh, whether it was intentional or not, was pushing insurance towards employer groups, and they made it not legal for you to give your employees an eight thousand dollar raise and say, go find your own insurance. So what we are is having to move a lot of groups that had done that back to employer-sponsored plans. The other thing is, if you were to give them an eight thousand dollar raise, that eight thousand becomes taxable to the employee, and so they're gonna lose a couple thousand of that immediately, whereas right now, the taxable premiums, the the premiums are not taxed, so it's a direct benefit to the employees. And in some si- and in most situations, plans that are on the individual market are a major decrease in benefits compared to what the city has, we're talking six thou- I don't know if anybody here has an individual plan. A six thousand, seven thousand dollar deductible for a single is not unheard of on the individual market.
I do find it ironic, though, when you mention the word nonprofit insurance. Because I don't know too many that aren't making a profit, and then I find it ironic that we're the highest insurance in the United States because of the mail clinic, which is nonprofit.
Um, actually, in the, in the state of Minnesota, our area is, yes, is high.
But I just find it ironic how nonprofit is used for such mysterious reasons.
Yeah, no, and you're right, mail clinic does a, does the best top-of-the-line care, it's just expensive, so. But yeah, nonprofit, true, true, nonprofit, good point.
What I'd like to see is, you know, you you told us these things, small things, but I didn't see any numbers, I didn't see a chart saying, well, if we, if we go with, uh, Blue Cross or or the other one.
Yeah, whatever.
You know, what are those numbers, what are those numbers to us?
Yeah.
I mean, because, I mean, because we're looking at the whole city we gotta look at, I mean, we have to, yeah, we've got our employees, but we have to look at what the cost of it is to taxpayers.
Yeah, and I did that probably purposely to not create a paperwork storm.
I'd like to add that before we make a decision when we start doing the budget, Ron, on the stuff, so we can see which way we may want to go. I think we need to see that.
You know, you, uh, thank you for bringing that up, Ron. I think this really needs to be discussed, I think, uh, to have a clear conscience and vote on this thing, we need to discuss it, not just approve it like we're always doing. And I also, I, the legal part of it, I get so tired of hearing about data privacy and all this kind of stuff because everybody has good intentions doing the right thing. So to me, if we went with a hundred and twenty dollar deductible and we gave everybody a two percent raise to help cover that, but you can't say that, maybe, maybe that's an option, I don't know. But I think I would really appreciate to explore this more.
I mean, I really think we should see the numbers and the breakdowns on on that. I mean, if, because if we do that, then then we've got a clearer picture than than just what you told us, I mean, we appreciate that. But I mean, I still think we need to see the breakdown, so if, what would be the cost, you know, if it's eighty, twenty, seventy, thirty,
Right.
whatever it is, but we need to see that so that we can make the best decision, not only for our employees, but for our citizens also that pay the tab.
And the, the, and I can do that, the difficult part is that none of these plans line up the same, okay? So we're not comparing apples to apples, we're comparing a plan that's a little cheaper, that has a different co-insurance to a plan that's, you know, a a better plan that costs a little more, shifting the cost back and forth. And then there's also the, uh, the things that you can't quantify in numbers, like, uh, the service and the difficulties the carriers have or have not been having, um, which influences my decision significantly because the last thing I want to be doing is coming back here, saying that we recommended the worst possible option for the employees as far as administration goes, so. But I can try to quantify that in a.
I mean, something that's close to what we've got now, with two of the other, with two of these plans, to show us which one, or some that are comparable. I mean, they don't have to be the same, but as long as they're comparable
Right.
for us to be able to look at.
Right.
I mean, because, I mean, I've been asking this for a couple of years, let's, you know, instead of going down the same road, let's see if there's something comparable that might save us fifty dollars.
Oh, yeah, right, I mean, we can save fifty dollars.
I mean, I mean, or whatever, I mean, I mean, that's just what I'm trying to say is, but we need to find a way, and we need to be able to look at that.
Yep.
I mean, I just don't want to see, okay, uh, on the budget line for insurance, you know, five hundred thousand dollars, and that's what we're stuck with. But we didn't get a chance to look at it to see, you know, if there's another plan that might be comparable that might save us a little, a little money on the budget.
No, I'm sure there's a law out there for this too, but I don't understand, everything we do around here, we gotta have bids on it. I don't understand why you don't put the insurance out there and say the city needs to renew their insurance this year, and insurance companies bid on it. I don't know why it has to be done this way outside, I'm sure there's a law or a rule or something again.
Uh, you're right, there is a law. Um, for groups that are under fifty, the bidding process has pretty much been eliminated due to the fact that all of the rates for all of the carriers are published. So all I have to do is look at my spreadsheets for the four carriers, and there's no negotiations with the carriers anymore. Um, you ask for rates and they send you the spreadsheet, and I can just plug in, uh, our group, and it tells me what the rates are. It's it's purely spreadsheeting. Um, I ask for bids from, uh, Peep, but theirs isn't, uh, anyways, so, yeah, so the bid process.
Sorry it takes much of your time.
No, you know, I expected it, that's fine, I'm trying to do the best I can for you guys and and work with Ron here, and make sure we get the best option for the, for the city, so. And make sure your guys, not necessarily are happy, but at least understand the pain and why we are stuck with what we're s- we're kind of stuck, I guess, so.
And one of the things that concerns me is that is, as we look at these and we try to save a dollar here, and we try to save a dollar there, how, how much does our benefit package w- work in in retention and recruitment?
Right.
Um, if we all of a sudden go from a thirty dollar copay up to a hundred and twenty dollar copay, because we can save twenty-five bucks a month, is that, you know, does that play into it when we're trying to recruit somebody to come work for us or to keep people who are already here?
I mean, I understand that too.
Something to think about as we go into the discussion.
I mean, I understand that too, I mean, I just, I would just like to see the option, the comparison. You know, that way, you know, we we know we've done our homework, you know, for, you know, for the employees and for the citizens. I mean, that's the biggest thing, is to try to make sure we did our homework. I mean, because there may be other things you can do in a benefit package that might be more enticing, you know, as far as, uh, um, you know, uh, health insurance accounts and and all that kind of stuff, it might be something there that we could improve on to make it better. But, I mean, as we go forward, we'll have to look at it, but I, I think we just need to really look at that hard one time before we make our decision again.
Well, one of the, one of the reasons, or one of the good things about this is that last year, as you recall, we were talking about this in November, right before we set our final levy, after we set our proposed levy. Um, and so now we at least have the opportunity, and I know there were questions last year, I knew there were gonna be questions this year, and that's why I brought Bill in to, uh, because I sure as heck didn't know the answers, um, so, but we also didn't want to get down to the detail either, but we'll, we'll get the information put together as best we can and and get it back to you. But the other, the other consideration too is that we've got two bargaining units that we will be negotiating with this, that we are negotiating with this year too, so those, that's always gotta be a play into that too.
There is a state law that has to do with how you bargain with groups and, uh, change benefits, so that's something that I guess you'll get to deal with, I guess, so.
I mean, that's why we need to look at it now instead of November.
Right, right, which is why we made the move we did last year and changed our renewal date to get us bumped up a little bit, so. All right, anything else?
Thanks for coming down.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Next thing up is the First English Church Bank erosion, Mr. Anderson.
All right, evening, Mayor, members of the council. At the ambivalent cost of following the insurance guy, but, uh, with the engineer, so you're in for a boring night tonight. Um, in my memo, that we've got the First English Church down there off of Second Street in Bell, in the southwest part of the city. Their parking lot is kind of shown here in the map, the church building's up here in the corner, and Bell Street up here, Second over here. Most of their parking lot, from the west side of the church, west drains west towards a ravine that gets into the little canon. Couple of years ago, during that major storm event, that was damaged, eroded back, as you can see with all these tight contour lines, and now this parking lot sheet drains off down the bank, and now they've put curb in a few years ago, and it kind of it intensifies it right to this spot, and now it's eroding the bank, and this line here is the manhole, and there's a sewer manhole down here. So this thin light line is the sanitary sewer main that's getting perilously close, or the bank eroding is getting perilously close to the sewer. Uh, Chief McCormick's worked with FEMA to secure funds to repair this because it was part of a major FEMA qualifying event a few years ago. So what we've come up with, with, is a plan to put in a a catch basin up here, just off the parking lot, a pipe down most of the slope to an outlet structure that wouldn't directly daylight, it would have to bubble out the top, it would have a drain out the side, and then refill the bank and put in a riprap channel, so anything that does not, carried by the pipe, would run down the riprapped reinforced slope versus the dirt-eroded slope that's there now, and protect our, our sanitary sewer. This is the, uh, platted right-of-way of, um, Third, and then the sewer turns and goes east and then back north up to Bell Street. So the work would be in the city's right-of-way, and and as in, in the memo, the cost, what we're estimating the cost to complete this is all covered by what, uh, the chief has worked out with FEMA, so the next step is to go out and get some quotes, which we would do here in August, bring them back to you in the September meeting, and, uh, if we get a quote right in the ballpark and you agree, we'll go ahead and get it done yet this fall. And then we'll turn everything in and track it and get it all reimbursed through FEMA like we did with the bridge repairs from the storms ten, you know, ten years ago, and other, the other FEMA work that Jeff's done.
All right, questions for Greg?
Yep, Greg, just so I'm clear now, your memo says that, uh, Chief McCormick has worked with FEMA to secure funding to repair the eroded bank. Does this funding include all of the work?
What we've estimated, what we're, what, the plan I laid out tonight and our work is
Everything's included.
The estimates that we have for now, so now the next step is to get the actual construction costs to make sure we're we're in the ballpark. And if it's, if it's way out of that, I know there's some ability to go back to FEMA, I don't know how much, but we're hoping that we've estimated high and the and the quotes we get will be within the number we've talked about, and then it, then it will be covered.
I went up there today and looked at it, Greg. What, uh, are you gonna put a curb in the back of that parking lot?
Well, there, there is a curb now, it's, uh, basically some Jersey, or, um, those car- parking lot bumpers along the west side, right here. And then it
Wide open back there.
And then there's about twenty feet of grass that it runs across, so we're gonna put a catch basin in, and then a berm behind it to try to capture the water. Not necessarily curb, but kind of a berm. So the majority of the vents will go down the storm sewer instead of over the bank, but the large vent will still have the ability to go over the top down our riprapped bank instead of where where it is now.
Right, to me, you either gotta put a berm or you gotta put a curb in there, one or the other.
Yep, we're gonna put a berm behind that catch basin to, um, keep the water, keep the majority of the vents going down the pipe and not over the hill.
Right, and, and, um, I mean, everything you talked about is the first thing that popped into my mind, I don't see a big deal with running a ten or twelve-inch PVC to the bottom of that hole, and then putting your catch basin in and and riprap and that, and hopefully you're done with it. I mean, uh, this was kind of an engineering flaw when that parking lot was designed that you don't even have to be an engineer to, you see that this was gonna happen. Uh, the one thing is that I disagreed with you a little bit, is I think it's only a third of the parking lot goes in that, but it's also a heck of a sized parking lot, and it's a lot of dang water going in there.
Yeah, and it's all hard service and gets there now.
We got today with my business and with the construction business is, it's so amazing to me how we used to have to deal with one inch or two inch of rain, and now we're dealing with four and five inches at a time. So I'm quite amazed it isn't washed out worse than it is. But I would point out that I did have a concern there, and I know there's an answer, and you don't have to answer me tonight, but I did see a clay tile that cemented off and capped down there. And hopefully, uh, we know if that's the old sewer outlet to the river down there or what that is, um, with that, that's it's it's a clay tile with just a cement cap on it, you probably already know it, so, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I make a motion to move ahead.
They got a motion by Leroy?
Second.
Second by John, to move ahead with the, uh, going ahead for quotes for the First English Church Bank erosion. Any further discussion?
All of them. One quick question, Robbie, is there some reason, um, that we don't do this in-house? I mean, we've got all the equipment to do this, is there some reason that we're not doing it in-house?
I, I, I would, I don't think Tom, Republic Works has the
FEMA won't allow it, you can do it on an overtime situation, but they will not pay straight wages for FEMA work. So if there's an event and we go out after the fact, they will pay that wage, but if we were to do it during our work schedule, they will not pay wages to the city.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. That moves us on to item HC, which is the Woodward, Wood, Woodridge Bluff roadway.
Okay, per the council direction last meeting, we solicited, uh, seven quotes to repair the last four hundred feet or so of a limestone road. We got three back, as you can see in my memo, they're all very tightly packed together in cost, and it's about seventy-nine. Four fifty is the low bid of Rochester Sand and Gravel. Asleksons, it's a little over seven and a half, and then Batumis Roadways was about eight-eight. Um, I heard back from two of the other contractors said they didn't have time to do it, and the other two I never heard back from. Uh, the schedule I gave them was to have it completed by mid-October, with the only caveat that once they start, they had eighteen days to get done. Thought it would be, you know, be as attractive as we could, they could fit it into their schedule as best they could, but, um, some of them felt they still didn't have time or didn't want to tackle the project, or maybe it's just the size of it being relatively small for the amount of mobilization and different crews they have to bring in. So the council's not under, does not have to award it tonight if you don't want to, but, um, the three bids we got are pretty close, and Rochester Sand and Gravel did Alexander Court this year and is also working on Highway fifty-two, so if you wanted to move ahead, they obviously can complete the work.
So here are my two questions. First was, what I recall is the estimate was a forty-five, forty-five to sixty originally, and it was forty-five if we don't need more fill material, and the high would be sixty if we did. So all of these presume that we do need more fill material, has that been established?
We put that in there, we put that in the quantities, so when we get out there, if we we have it in the bid versus having to come back after. And we also added to repair two catch basins to this project, now granted, it's a small, probably five grand worth of And we also added to repair two catch basins to this project, now granted, it's a small, probably five grand worth of work on the total. Now, those are, those are my estimates, again, I'm just estimate based on previous work, and until we get a hard number from a contractor, that's really what the cost is today to do that work, but you are correct, we did put in the additional material in the quantities, so if we did need it, it was in the work, if we didn't end up using it, again, this, these projects are bid with different units, and we only pay for the units we use, it's not a lump sum, so we only pay with what we actually use out there, but we did accommodate the, the additional material if needed in the quantities.
Okay. Tough one, 'cause I know we had tied, well, in my, I'll speak for myself only, uh, there had been the small city, what's the name of the little grant thing that the state gave this year?
It's the, uh, state's Transportation Small Cities Assistant Account or something like that.
Right, and that was gonna be thirty-
Thirty-two thousand, a little over thirty-two thousand each year this year and next, a total of about sixty-four, sixty-five.
So we're looking about fifty thousand.
I think Greg's estimate was forty-five to sixty-five, I believe, is what we talked about earlier.
Right.
You know, the other option would be to just hold off until next year, early in the spring and, and rebid, or call for proposals again. It's not going anywhere other than down.
That's true, and as long as the parcel, potential partial, parcel purchasers know that they will not be assessed, it shouldn't inhibit property sales, which is, of course, was our concern, but.
This isn't an issue where somebody's gonna have a flat tire or tear the transmission out or something.
No.
Um, and I don't know why it would get better next year, but to me, I'd just like to put it on hold, I think there's a lot of big issues to think about, and I'd rather think about it next June.
Anybody else?
Do we have any reason to think that our bids would be lower?
Well, we are here the first of August, so now half their construction season's over, if we were to re-quote this in, let's say, February or March, and give them the balance of the summer to do the work.
A little hungrier then?
You typically see better bids in the winter when they're trying to fill up their scorecard, if you will, and we've had a fairly wet summer, a lot of these paving and concrete guys are behind, and some of them might not be wanting to take another project on that they don't know they can get in in time, so. I would, I think there, it's a reasonable expectation to see a reduction in quotes next year if we bid it in the winter or spring, and, and did it, or if the council decides to move ahead with some semblance of a street job, you could add it as an alternate. Now you've got a larger project bringing a guy into town, you can maybe minimize some mobilization costs. That's probably the biggest thing we're fighting here, because none of this work is a full day, it doesn't take a full day for him to tear the road out, isn't gonna take him a full day to put the curb back, it's not gonna take him a full day to pave it, so now he's gotta factor in all that mobilization for a half day's worth of work, whereas if it was included as an alternate to a street job, he's in town, his crews are here, they run up there for the afternoon and finish it, so that, that's another option to think about, and you don't have to make that decision tonight. Either, either one is, is, is a possibility in the spring.
I think we're better off, uh, waiting till February and rebidding it and, or including it in, uh, another, any other job that we are looking at doing.
Is that a motion?
What?
Is that a motion?
That is a motion.
Motion by Ken, second by Leroy. Any further discussion on this?
Just a question, not that I'm even a hundred percent convinced this, this would be the right thing to do, but, uh, that grant, the first year of that two-part grant will come in, I don't imagine that it can be effectively earmarked for this project, or that we would necessarily even want to do that, but we must, we have to accept the idea that, that those, that source of funding may not be as conveniently available for this project. Next year, we may have a better thing to use that for between now and then.
When does that come in, Ron? Is that in June?
I think it came in, I don't know if it's come in, but I thought it was gonna be July, so should be here if it's not already.
And that's thirty-two thousand or thirty-four thousand for this year?
Thirty-five or something like that.
And then we get the same again next year?
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So we, and it sounds like we would not be able to count on that being-
And do we have to use it by the end of the fiscal, by the, end of the state's fiscal year?
No, that, even the first time, the first go-round, when we got that fifty-one thousand, they didn't, their, their guidelines were really loose, and it's just that you need to use it for a street project, there weren't any end dates, and I haven't seen anything like that on this.
Let's just double check on that, just to be sure, so that we know, and we don't get caught, and have to give it back or something.
Out of my cold dead hand, just kidding.
All right, all those in favor of, uh, holding off, uh, and not awarding this until the spring?
Aye.
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 Pose. Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Brings us on to item eight D, which is the Mill Street parking discussion. I know, uh, Public Works Committee, uh, spoke on this tonight, uh, I asked to bring this up because there seems to be a lot of, uh, people out there that, uh, have concerns with, uh, the way the parking is on Mill Street. It's been that way for quite a while, uh, there's other places in town besides just Mill Street that, uh, also have some tight, uh, spaces going through there, so I thought it to be good that we brought up the Mill Street stuff tonight, and, you know, it might be good to hear what Public Works decided or talked about there, and then we kinda go from there on, on this issue.
Okay, I mean, uh, Tommy, wanna work together to fill them in on what we've discussed so far?
Well, in going back approximately four years ago, because of, uh, demand of more parking space, that's why the, uh, diagonal was, went to, we gained five spots at that time of parking, and we have eighteen stalls on the north side, and we have ten stalls available on the south side of Mill Street. So that's what initiated it from the start. We've, we've kicked around ideas such as a one-way, uh, parking on the bridge, which isn't feasible because of the height of the curb. Uh, I even have where we could add approximately five or six stalls back in front of the Lee Chevrolet. But that doesn't, of course, we don't know what the long-term plan of the winery is, as far, as far as the building itself, so that may not even, that's not even really something we wanna tackle at this point, but the, the short term of it,
Sorry?
And, and John could comment on this a little bit, as he talked to some of the business owners, losing five stalls, I, I'm guessing is huge to a business person down there, as far as the turnover rate, the amount of money spent by each vehicle coming in there, so. There's more to this picture, which initiated this back four years ago, why did we do this? Because that was, we need more parking, and as we can all agree with the ice cream shop and the, and the brewery coming in, it's even gonna get hectic or busier down there yet, where we need more parking, so that's, um, I think it was a recommendation of the Public Works Commission that we just keep everything diagonal. It's been brought up two or three times, other Public Works Commissions through the years, and they've kind of agreed because of the lack of parking and the loss of the parking stalls. And that's where John, you know, maybe you could-
Well, I did talk to the business owners to the west side of Forest Street, and none of them wanna lose parking spots downtown. Uh, they'd rather keep the diagonal, but like I said, it kinda all hinges on what the plans are for the winery before I think we do anything. I suggested one-way, coming from the west one-way and coming from the east side one-way that way. Might alleviate, you know, alleviate some problems, but that's just a suggestion.
Just to provide a little extra context, uh, for folks that may, like me, be newer to this, what we're talking about is, okay, so there's, right now there's diagonal on the north and south side. At one time, there was diagonal on the north side and parallel on the south side, they changed the south side to diagonal, that was the change from four years ago. It wasn't that it was all parallel and we went to all diagonal, it was making a double diagonal. Um, so now the discussion would be, if we're talking about making something parallel again, it's just the south side, it's not the both sides. Um, one of the things we talked about at Public Works with respect to the one-way idea, which is very effective in other towns for narrow roadways, have a one-way, parall, uh, diagonal parking both direction, on both sides, but there's not a, a, a back way. There's not a, a parallel street with Mill Street that could effectively accomplish what it, what they have in those other towns, which is that, that the block over is one-way the other direction, so that people don't have to drive a long way out of their way. If you went the wrong way on that, you'd have to drive around a good bit to get back around it, we don't think that the, the business owners either would necessarily like not being able to have both directions available to you on Mill Street. One of the other things that we talked about at council, again, this is just filling in some of the context, 'cause again, this has been a conversation that's been occurring for some time, is we talked here about a possible restriction, prohibition, or strong suggestion against oversized vehicles parked in that way. The talk at Public Works tonight was that people might not know how long their vehicle is. So you wouldn't wanna make it an ordinance with teeth, for example, where someone's gonna be ticketed or towed, based on a particular vehicle length, and I can see that, and I understand that, but I, I'm not, I remain con- convinced that if we had some appropriately styled, uh, signage in the right location that said, uh, you know, please no oversized vehicles, or something, that, again, it's more of a strong suggestion. People know that they have an oversized vehicle, and there are parking garages all over the Twin Cities and this country that restrict oversized vehicles in certain places, and people, if they choose to, can abide by that. And the fact, okay, here's the other context, we had our, we had Jeff McCormick search back into incidents and accidents figures at Mill Street over the cap, of course, I think it was seven or eight years, wasn't it?
Seven or eight years, yep.
Seven or eight years, and there's no, there's no, uh, uptick in accidents and incidents on Mill Street once we went to double directional, or double diagonal parking. So although it's universally agreed that it feels tight, quote-unquote, it is not resulting in act, people are just careful, it sounds like, and they manage, and, and I have to think, 'cause we've talked about this about Hoffman, and I remember the same sort of it-feels-very-tight objection when there was talk about putting in the drive-through at the, at Family Fair, right? We, we have the good fortune to have people here that are doing things and are out and about, and they are engaging in commerce, and they are visiting our city in the parking for the canoe and boat rental, right? Um, we are a small town, and we are attracting people, and this is a, this is a beautiful problem to have. I guess I'm just, I don't, that's my thought, I don't know where I'm going with that.
Well, I think emergency vehicles, like the fire department, I think there's plenty of room to get through there even if it's full. I'm just was ref, uh, making reference to like Hayward and Spooner up in northern Wisconsin, they've got diagonally parking and, uh, their roads are a lot smaller than our Mill Street, and they, they've got it up there, I just, as an example. Couple of things I'd like the council to think about is, um, it's always tough to decide between safety and money, where the balance is, I understand that. But safety should be the number one issue. I also know that if somebody hears about our winery and comes to town with a full-size, one-ton pickup, um, and they gotta find a place down the parking lot, that probably isn't a big deal, but if they pull in and the sign is in front of them, and then now they gotta back out again, and, uh, that, that could be an issue. Um, uh, but I also think that the winery down there, we need to look at more the overall picture. And to me, the overall picture is, I don't know why they don't buy the old Lee Chevrolet building from us, and, and I don't know why we don't lose a couple stalls and go to more angle, um, on our parking, so we do get another two feet through there. Uh, there's probably another state regulation that says you can't do that, but, uh, I think if we could put more angle on there and lose two stalls, that would answer a lot of questions. I don't like the one-way thing at all, because that is the main road, uh, that goes out to the fairgrounds, that goes up to Hoffman Street. Uh, I think that would, uh, be a terrible mistake. Uh, but I, I do think the winery has to work with us more, and to me, that is buying that building, making the whole thing parking down there, I don't know why the city shouldn't take safety first, instead of whether the winery's gonna get two more cars or whatever. And I could get into the commerce and, uh, stuff on the winery a lot more, but I'm not gonna do that, because to me, that's, that's a business that makes money and is out to make money. Um, they should be able to pay for their buildings and their parking. Um, and we, the parking thing is an issue, it's a safety issue. Um, I don't know what the answer is, I just wanted to give you my thoughts on it, thank you.
So the, the business people and the people that I've spoke to downtown like the, like the peril, or the, uh, angle parking, and they would, everyone to a T says, get rid of the oversized vehicle, which is what Public Works talked about. Now, I don't know how long it would take to get people accustomed to not parking their, you know, six-ton duly pickup down there, but, I think from the people that I've talked to downtown, the many phone calls that I've received, just try to get rid of the oversized vehicle, especially in that south side.
And what, is there any kinda legal thing if you put more angle on that parking down there? I mean, if you took and moved all them another fifteen degrees, that, that would make at least two feet through there, which is a lot.
Our code for angle parking does say forty-five to sixty degrees, so that's what we could do.
Are they forty-five through it or is it-
Sign of forty-five?
Yep.
So you could angle them more.
But that would be the wrong, wouldn't that be the wrong direction?
Forty-five would be the most, the least angle.
Right.
Sixty would be closer to ninety, and then you lose your two-
Then you, you go in the wrong direction.
Between the two, but you're at the, you're, you're at the best situation now, let's say.
Okay, so you're saying there's no option to put any more angle?
Right, that's what they're saying.
Yeah.
Well, I know we'd lose, I don't care if you lose two of them.
We'd lose space though, if you brought it from forty-five degrees to sixty, it's gonna make even tighter in there.
It'd make the cars stick out into the traffic. You, you want smaller than a forty-five degree angle.
We're at the best angle we can be based on what you want, no, right.
The forty-five is a minimum.
Angles.
Ah, there you go again. Okay, I'm done.
I mean, is that something that, is that a state law, or is that-
No, it's our, it's what's in our code, I mean, it could, that could be changed if we came up with a functional plan.
That's the city code?
It, yep, under our angle parking code, that would also include if we wanted to restrict length, we don't have anything in our code at this time, we'd have to make a code for-
Well, again, we wouldn't have to restrict, we could just encourage. We could just encourage, we're talking about a total of twenty-eight spots, you know what I mean, we're not talking about all over town, we're not talking about you can't have your duly pickup truck in the city limits, you know what I mean, we're gonna haul you out of town.
Well, I'm just talking the south side.
I understand that.
Talking the north side.
But, okay, the objection has always been, if there are two oversized vehicles, and they are near one another, that that, that passageway between the ends of those two oversized vehicles, as they're parked on the north and the south, is far too narrow. And I think that we all kind of agree that would be a problem for an emergency vehicle, that vehicle could never pass another vehicle. So if you, if you were going to say no oversized vehicles, you would do it on both sides of Mill Street, you wouldn't just do it on one.
But then my question for you with Public Works is, how do you do it, do that with signage? Do you do it at the stop signs, uh, do you do it as the entrance on the-
Probably on this, on the lamp posts.
So you're gonna have them pull in and then realize we gotta back down?
They gotta back out anyways when they leave.
Look a little bit before they, uh, fully pull in, I, uh, so that, unless they're, uh, not paying attention to what they're doing.
I know, I know some parking garages up in the cities that I wanted to pull into a spot and go compact, you know, you can't pull your truck in there, so you gotta go around.
Signage is right there.
Well, I mean, it's in the area, so.
It's in the area.
I mean, to me, we should have signage right at the stop signs, oversized vehicles parking lot only, or no oversized vehicles on Mill Street.
That's not a bad idea, I don't think you could over-
Something that we can look at doing, and, you know, that's why we wanted to bring this up, so we can talk about it and try to figure out an option, you know, for that, I mean, whether it's signage, I mean, I know you talked with, uh, the city attorney, Ron, on that, and, and that was his big thing, was people not knowing the size of their vehicle, you know, uh, what's considered a compact. You know, that's the other issue, so how do you enforce what you consider a compact compared to what, you know, John considers a compact, uh, you know, what Leroy considers a compact? I mean, those are the other things that we have to look at too. Uh, so I mean, enforcement would be the other issue, I mean, if you've got it up there and nothing's enforced, then why spend the money to put it up there?
Well, because a lot of people are, I like to believe in the common courtesy of our fellow man.
I do too, but, I do too.
So I think that many people would, would, would abide by that sort of spirit. Um, and the folks that don't, maybe we could have a little friendly ticket reminder, not a ticket-ticket, but just a, you know, for future visits to Cannon Falls, please park your oversized vehicle in another location, I mean, this can be done, these are not insurmountable obstacles, guys.
If, if we're just going off their goodwill, maybe even a back line, you know, it might catch your eye, if they get out, see that I'm hanging eight o, eight feet over this white line.
Oh yeah, there you go.
They're gonna say, huh.
Hey, backside.
Like, can you, can you fit in this spot like a carry-on bag?
I think that, uh,
It's a very good idea.
Talk to us more about the angle, talk to us more about the back line, talk to us more about signage, and let's get this thing done. I think it needs to be dealt with, it shouldn't be put off anymore.
Yep, I think we'll just, just keep, let's keep working on it and-
One other thing that did come up, just 'cause we need to go back to revisit this part, I think, you mentioned it, and I know the winery discussion, 'cause it is related, of course. So my understanding is that the, the folks at the winery- So my understanding is that the, the folks at the winery have promised, or that there is some, a very reasonable expectation, that their plan is, is soon to be revealed, and that that plan...
Their plan what?
Their plan for the Chevrolet building or whatever is soon to be brought to the planning commission. I don't know, it's gonna be finalized in some way soon. So there will be direction based on that, about what we can do for the stretch of roadway that's in front of Lee Chevrolet. And based on the measurements, depending on whether there needs to be an outlet or not an outlet, there's another five or six spots available there, on, in a parallel fashion, not angled, because it's on that turn. So, I mean, there are, there's potential for gains of parking down there. And my understanding is that the winery's plan is going to work with that, it's gonna be, well, yeah, we will inform ourselves with that.
Well, I think Cedar, that, when you guys discuss that, to me, that road should not be closed down there. I mean, I got a lot of calls, people didn't want that road closed, and, and I totally understand, but if the winery wants that road closed, and they are in a commercial business to make money, then buy the road, the Lee Chevrolet building, and we'll close it up, do whatever you want. But it's our city road through there, I don't think it's right to take a semi and completely block that road off. I don't think that's fair, especially to the elderly that pull in there and maybe got some driving issues, get a little tense, because now what do I do? There is issues with closing that down, and I, I don't think it's good. And they talked about putting their patio out there and doing all this, and all I see them do is take more sidewalk out front, and you can't hardly get through there, if you're walking on the sidewalk. So to me, the winery needs to be a better partner with us, and discuss this a lot.
And, you know, and to Babe's question tonight, the city does own that one piece, if you look at the GIS, but it's not listed as a road on the GIS. Your roads are marked in other ways, but the city does own that one piece, and it goes from the city parking lot to the piece that the EDA owns, and the part that the winery owns. They, that's just a piece of property based off the GIS and what's out there that the city owns. And whether it's a, whether it's called a road, or whether it's called the parking lot, or the drive-through for the parking lot, that's what it is at this point, and until we can go back and figure all this out, that's where we're gonna let it stand at this time, and we did want to address it.
I understand that, Rob, and Mr. Mayor. My only issue is, is the law clearly states that if it is used as a roadway for a period of seven years, it is a roadway by prescription. And that's what that is, is a roadway. And I'm just telling you, I know what it is.
Is anybody familiar what Ron Stoll wants to do with the winery? Does he plan on moving to the west, or his plans include closing the road?
That's TBD, to be revealed.
Well, we're wait, we're waiting on the, we're waiting, we're waiting on his plans. I mean, and they should be, you know, last I heard, they're coming up pretty soon.
Mm-hmm.
I think the ideal situation would have been if they'd have bought the old Germstead Hardware and paid Altos to close the alley down and made that all one building through there. But we'll see what happens.
Yep. I had one more question, maybe of Joe. I don't know if throttling down traffic from the west as far as speed would help. It's probably not gonna do anything for as far as the east, but if you could bring that down, I know statute is twenty-five miles an hour, but if that was twenty miles an hour, you know, you might have not coming off the bridge as fast, so it doesn't seem so hectic there.
Well, the statute's thirty, unless we can, the council would come up with a reason why it would need to be less. But I think Cedar hit the nail on the head when she said, it's less space, therefore people are way more cautious, and we haven't had incidents. The more incidents that I see, there are people walking out, not using a crosswalk, and not seeing cars coming, but definitely it's a pretty clear line of sight, even when you're coming over to the bridge, to see, hey, it's narrow, they're slowing down. We haven't had any complaints of people speeding through there. Now, yep, thirty miles an hour across the bridge looks like a good clip when you come into that narrow area, but...
I mean, is there, is there a way we could...
They're slowing down enough, because they're aware that it's a narrow, and someone could come around Fourth Street at any minute, so...
I mean, but we could look at maybe slowing it down to twenty miles an hour right through there?
Well, what I would prefer first is that maybe we do some traffic surveys there to see if that's something we really should do. I, I don't know that we've ever issued a ticket for anybody going over thirty there anyway, you know, kind of the same, the courteous of, hey, don't park your big trucks here, you know, some caution signs, narrow road.
I mean, I drove through it tonight, I mean, just to, you know, keep my mind fresh on how tight it is, and I was able to, in my truck, I mean, I got an extended cab, and, you know, I was able to pass other cars, it wasn't a truck that came next to me, but I mean, it was tight, but you just gotta slow down, and everybody was, I mean, nobody wants to ding their own vehicle or anybody else's, so. I mean, my other question, I mean, not just that one, but Hoffman Street, I mean, when you have two cars parked on the side of the road on Hoffman Street, there is no way for two cars to go by. I mean, and that'd be something else to look at, is possibly going to, you know, every other block, parking on one side of the street, or another, to try, so that you could get two cars by there. I mean, it might be something else to look at. I mean, especially, you know, when, I've been there like on a Saturday, and you're coming down Hoffman, and there's cars parked right there, and getting right close to that stop sign, it's really tight there. I mean, I don't think we've had many accidents there either, but it's, could be an accident waiting to happen, I mean, it's just, it's, it's something to, to think about.
Leroy brought up a safety aspect. Has anybody ever talked to Tim or Todd, to find out the opinions of the ambulance service and the fire department, just what they think?
Yeah.
I mean, if safety is a concern, they should certainly be brought in on the conversation.
Yeah. I mean, to me, something to, to think about on that, on that street, too, so, as we're moving forward.
That's good.
I would, I would ask, I am not, but I would entwayer, just as a matter of black letter law, I'm sure the city attorney can advise whether or not the prescriptive easement rule in Minnesota applies to this. I don't believe that it does, I believe that the, the use needs to be nonpermissive and adverse, and in this case, it has not been, therefore the prescriptive easement law would not apply. But we may wanna just wrap that up.
Okay. Anything else on this discussion? If not, we're gonna move on to item eight E, which Leroy brought down for the just and correct claims.
Yeah, this is for you, Ron. Too bad for you, but I had an extra hour tonight, so I went over everything in the budget. And I think I've got about twenty-five checkmarks on there and questions. So what I will be doing is bringing this down, and you take a look at it, and get back to me on your response. Some of the things that I checked off were, there's a billing for like eight-twenty-five that's in the top part of the page, and then as I read through the next page, it's billed out in there again. There also was a, a mini split air conditioner in building ten, where is building ten? Okay, so there's a mini split air conditioner, I was wondering if that's replacement, or how come we didn't?
That, that's a replacement of a humidifier. We found the mini splits worked out better in the wells, as far as keeping condensation down than the humidifiers.
Okay, and this was a replacement unit?
We got some mini splits from the hospital, and that was part of the install.
Okay, okay. And then there's other things on there, there's two different places where the billing seems to be the same, and I got the checkmarks on there, and I'll send that down, and just get back to me sometime, or send me an email that says what it's about. Thank you.
Okay.
I make a motion to go ahead with that.
Motion by Leroy?
Second.
Second by Morris. Any further discussion on the just and correct claims? Not all those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Carrie's. Reports. Tom?
Just remind people, we're working our way across town, as far as pot hole fill, we've used about forty ton of asphalt so far. Once we get through the town, whatever's left over, we will do a couple alleys, as we have in the past. We go by washouts, as you see, every time we get a good rain, some of these alleys we have to chase down the street and start dragging things back, and so that's kind of our priority, is the ones that wash out and get rutted first, so we're slowly working across town on that, too.
Hey, Tom, a quick question for you. Would you consider sometime looking at Ohio Street over here? That's a street that's been patched up for fifty years, it's always in tough shape, and if we're gonna spend a little extra money on alleys, could we think about just going with a one-inch or two-inch overlay over Ohio? And then the other thing is, would you contact the state and ask them if they can do a better job of taking care of the railroad place over there? Their, their rocks and stuff are getting out on the state highway there. I don't know why that is blacked out back at least twenty feet there. So check into them two things for me, will you? Thank you.
Anything else, Tom?
Well, thank you. Something we had come in late this afternoon, if you recall, for seven years, the Dubar Rack Race was done in town, and that was the congregation at the Mill Street Tavern do a five-k race, and they end there. They just got all their plans together, if it would so please the council, they're looking for approval to close the four-hundred block of Mill Street on Saturday, September ninth, from seven AM to eleven AM, for what they are now have, calling their five-k the Hearts for Guatemala, which is a mission to, for medical purposes to Guatemala that they'll be doing in February. So we definitely can bring that back to the next council meeting, but they would just like to see if that's something we could get approved tonight, so they can move forward with their advertising of their event.
That's the weekend after Labor Day, right?
That'd be correct.
Have we had any complaints before, when it's been closed down for the Dubar thing?
Nope, and they take care of everything themselves, they don't request any additional help from Public Works, they, they'll get barricades and stuff from Public Works the night before, they put them at Mill Street that night, they set it all up themselves that day. They don't need our assistance for stopping any traffic, we just make sure that they have it barricaded off sufficiently for their safety, and then they will clean up their event afterwards, and of course, we'll make sure at eleven o'clock, they're all opened up and back to normal business.
Wish they should all be so easy.
Is that Mill Street from like up the hill toward Casey Street back, or?
Nope, in front of the Mill Street Tavern, the four-hundred block.
Okay, okay.
Okay, is that, is that gonna go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For that morning, we won't have to worry about parking.
Yeah, it won't be any.
You can park a lot of vehicles in there.
Are there any other events scheduled in, in the area that day, with any of the businesses that it could affect?
I didn't see any.
I think they've coordinated with the businesses on Mill Street.
Yep, they did, they did talk to the businesses there and make sure that they, like the winery wasn't having any events in that morning, they usually have afternoon things, so as far as what we were told by the organizers is, it was all good with everybody within that block.
Okay, so can we, can we move that back to council business then, and put it as item eight F, or? It'll be item eight F, which will be the Dunbar Five-K?
It used to be the Dubar.
Be called the Hearts for Guatemala Five-K, it's the same organizers, though.
Okay.
We also encourage them, if they're gonna do it next year, that we can get it approved with all of our other closures that we do early in the year, so...
Was that September, the?
September?
Ninth.
The ninth, from seven AM to eleven AM.
Okay. So Chair take a motion then, under item eight F, I think Mike made the motion.
Remove.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Cedar. Any further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Carrie's.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Tonight, we have National Night Out, we have ten parties that the officers are attending. I was able to attend two of those this afternoon, and get filled up on some delicious food from the citizens, so I thank them for participating in our National Night Out. This last weekend, we got to celebrate the fire department's one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. As you'll hear, I have a cold, I think that's because I was in the dunk tank after the mayor, not sure what I caught there, but congratulations, sounds like it's supposed to go to the mayor for raising the most money out of the dunk tank.
Oh.
So apparently people appreciated dunking, you know?
I felt good.
It felt reverse.
After a while, I found it was warmer at the bottom of the tank than the top when they dumped all the ice in, so... Thursday, we have coffee cops and conversation at ten-thirty in the morning at the bakery, if anybody can show up and come and ask us questions. Thursday, we also have the First Thursday Event. This year, what we're really promoting is our, the Code Red for households that don't have a home phone, how do you get an emergency notification in your neighborhood? We need people's cell phone information, so we can get those important things out. Friday afternoon, you'll find the Cannon Cruisers event is happening, they'll be gathering at the Cannon Falls High School. At seven PM, we'll begin the cruise, which will go from the high school down to Fourth and Main to the stoplights, gonna go south out County twenty-four. They will take a cruise around County nine, coming back in on County twenty-five to the city parking lot. So Friday night, there will be some restrictions along Main Street and the city parking lot. And then Saturday, we have the Lions' Main Concert. People got to enjoy some music in town last weekend with the Fireman's Dance, there're gonna be more music this Saturday night from the fairgrounds. That is expecting to end at eleven o'clock, however, so people can get a good night's sleep. That's all I have.
Thanks.
I'll thank all the officers for the special night, that they get their recognition and how much they're appreciated.
I will do that, thank you.
Ron?
Actually, just a couple of things, I've been looking at websites, looking at redoing ours, ours is an administrative nightmare for staff to work with. So we're looking at at least the dollars and cents to put in next year's budget, we're gonna keep it pretty minimal. Another thing I did hear from the state on those two parcels, they're still working on the conveyance, those are the two parcels just north of the VFW American Legion, and they're still working on the conveyance of those two deeds to us, so we're getting closer anyway on that. That's all I have.
Thanks. Lino?
I just wanted to update the council a little bit on the Minlars project that the state is working on with the DMV. It is not going well, you've maybe heard this in the media accounts, and that includes our office as well. Longer lines, things are not being able to be processed, so we just appreciate the cooperation and patience of the customers that come in, and I just wanted to inform you, so if you have any questions, please let us know.
I, I just wanna echo Joe's statements about the National Night Out, I was at a party across the street from my house, and there was a whole table full of kids, and when that ambulance and police car and fire truck showed up, their eyes, and it was just, it was really, really cool to see how excited they were, and the staff, the cops and the firefighters and the ambulance people that were there were just, they'd bent over backwards to make sure, they were spraying water, and they were laying on the cot, and the police officers had balloons and all stuff, it was just really cool, so kudos out to all those groups that volunteered tonight.
We were pleased to welcome Marcy French on behalf of the Cannon Arts Board to the Public Works Commission tonight. In particular, we're discussing the feasibility of having some very attractive downtown banners, like light post banners, like they have in many other small towns. That's a work in progress, but it was a pleasure to hear about some of the interesting celebrations of the fine arts that we have in Cannon Falls, so I encourage folks to check out the Cannon Arts Board website for more information. Thanks.
Hey Cedar, when you're working them banners, get a nice one made up to put on the sewer bridge down on the river there, welcome canoers to Cannon Falls. Because it's a great spot to have a banner, and this canoe business is crazy down there.
That's a great idea.
That is a great idea.
Yep. John?
Nothing from the planning commission, just one add to that, that roadway by the winery, I don't know if we mentioned, but that public roadway will be open now until further discussion on their winery plans, but the, he's done bottling, so they're not gonna be blocking their own anymore, just to make that clear.
And, and, you know, we, we did talk to him, I talked with Jeff after the last meeting, that if they are, still need to do a bottle next time, that they let us know earlier, and we make other arrangements, and we'll work it into a little bit better way for everybody. So, you know, there might be a time where we may have to close it for an hour, but it wouldn't be closed all day, but there's things that will, will work out there. I mean, I know we close off streets for the bike race, and, you know, downtown was blocked off for motorcycles this week, so, I mean, there's things out there that, that happen, and, but, you know, it's all growing pains, and we'll go from there. Leroy?
Yeah, and to make a little quick comment on that, I think it'd be nice if the street gets left open, but there can be orange cones set there with flashers because they got a forklift going back and forth or something. So maybe we can do something to keep it open and tell them to just use half of it and then do the flasher thing, make them put it out, manage it. So I think it's good to discuss about it. But anyway, geez, I don't wanna shock everybody, but I don't have anything tonight.
You had a great idea about the banner, Leroy, we can't expect any more out of you.
Hurry up, Ken, you got anything?
The Art Council does have a bunch of stuff planned for this coming First Thursday. So people, kids oughta come out and check them out.
Just wanna say kudos to the fire department for their great job that they did for their one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. It was fun in the dunk tank, I was hoping there would be some other people coming out to throw things at me. But it was fun aggravating the kids a little bit, and I know that my wife just made a big donation and she didn't throw any balls, she just went up and hit the red button and knocked me in the water. So she says she's not wasting any time.
I think that's illegal.
Well... Yeah, better check on that now. But kudos to our fire department for their one hundred and twenty-five years of service. And on National Night Out, it's good to see that we do it, a lot of communities don't do it, so it's good to see that it continues in Cannon Falls like it has for many years to come. Other than that, I have nothing else this evening, so Chair will take a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.